I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anybody really wonders why we put the flags behind us, behind you, it's part of a weight loss and exercise program that the city is promoting. And now, first off, I would ask that if anybody has a cellphone, that they put it on vibrate or shut it off, please. If they have pagers, please turn them to vibrate. Thank you. And also, if you choose to speak at any point during this meeting or the Gregory Council meeting, I'd ask you to state your name. Andy's on vacation and John is nice enough to fill in and he needs that help so he can get the right name in the paper. So, the public meeting is open and I would ask Mel to read the warning.
City of Virgin's notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given to the residents of the city of Virgin's, owners of land within said city, and other interested persons and parties, that the Virgin City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 17, 2012, at 7:00 PM in the Virgin's Fire Station Meeting Room as required by 24 VSA Section 4442. The purpose of the public hearing is for the city council to hear and receive testimony regarding the comprehensive amendments to the Virgin zoning and subdivision regulations as proposed by the Virgin's Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mel. Okay. We're only going to address those pages that were changed as of the last meeting, okay? And then, we will open it up to further questions or testimony after. Okay? So, the first, usually have Shannon sit in here, place Mel coaxing me at this point, but at this point, Article 10, Planned Unit Development, the first section that was changed is the...
Item C.
Item C.
On density.
Does anybody have any question, any of the board members have any questions on that? Or does anyone in the audience choose to speak on that? Hearing, nothing. Is the council members comfortable with the way that it is written? I just want to get a consensus so later on, if we take action on it, we don't visit it twice. Okay, so that's that one on that one, right?
Yep.
And so, the next one is page 73. There's a change in paragraph 17. Talks about the designation of landmark signs in the development. The Review Board shall consider the culture, history, and community significance of the existing sign. So, is there any comments from the council or the public on that? Hearing, none. Is the council in favor of the wording as it is written?
Yes.
Okay. And then...
That's it.
We go to, okay, I see the things. The next one is on page 75. Sandwich board sign shell. Number one is being stricken. Number two, and that was being prepared in the Central Business District, that is being taken out and number two is becoming number one, where it says be permitted in these locations as long as they are and it goes into a description as to what that is. Any comments on that from the council or the public? Joe?
I thought they were going to be permitted in all locations.
That's exactly what that's doing by eliminating one.
These locations, I guess I just didn't understand how it works.
Okay, so, when it says these locations, it's not pertaining to a district.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that, Mel. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing, none. Is the council okay with the way that's written?
Yep.
Okay. And then, on page 95, the standards, there was, on the chart, one talks about lot frontage minimum. Originally, it was one, or 7,600...
No, it was 70 feet.
Was 70 feet.
Right.
And, okay, so that's being stricken?
No, it's being reduced. This was the result of the testimony by Chris Robinson.
Okay.
Relative to lots in the historic neighborhood district whereby the lots in that district, many of them, when they were originally created, were created four rods wide, which is 66 feet. Also, many of them were recorded six rods deep, which is 99, which is 99 feet. And so, what this change is, is to set the minimum frontage at 66 feet, identified as four rods, and lot depth at 99 feet, also parenthetically identified at six rods.
Any questions or comments from either the council or the public? Hearing, none. Council okay with that?
Yep.
And then, going to page 107, there are three changes on that one, I believe.
Yeah, Mike, this here, 107, and I wasn't at the workshop, but I know that there was a lot of discussion about single-story buildings in the Central Business District and this, what is in front of you here, I'm going to suggest is a, is a non-substantive change and this is something that the Planning Commission wanted to do just to make it clearer about the waiver eligibility and because the Planning Commission felt that previously, item C was a two-sentence regulation and they, and they really felt that the waiver requirement was kind of buried in that, in that regulation and they wanted it to be a standalone regulation, really, and regardless of, regardless of catastrophic. It's, it's like if somebody had a vacant building, they could get a waiver. So, I think somebody might have interpreted that, that the, that the waiver was only applicable to catastrophic. And by, by separating those two sentences, they become standalone so that in catastrophic, somebody could come and request a waiver. If there's a vacant lot out there, or let's, let's say that somebody, let's say that there is a catastrophic loss and that, and they don't rebuild. And so, the lot sits there vacant for a decade, they could come under Section D and request a waiver of the board for a single-story building. So, I, that was, I believe, and again, I wasn't at the workshop, but I, I believe that, that this was attempting to be kind of the compromise as it relates to, although very much encouraging multi-story, there is a provision for waiver.
What's the criteria to give that waiver?
The only criteria, Bill, is it says, you know, to determine if it meets the definition purpose of the district. So, the only criteria they're going to do is they're going to go back and read the purpose of the district and, and see if whether or not a waiver should be granted, whether or not, you know, you know, the proposal, if it's going to totally upset the whole character of the, of the Central Business District, I would say that that's probably not going to meet that.
So, you just go back to the plan and discuss it?
The purposes are here, the purposes are included in these regs, so...
Yep, okay.
Shannon, do you have anything else you want to offer to that?
It really was, as Mel says, to try to really clarify, that, that sentence was kind of buried in, in with the previous sentence and the board decided, hey, let's break this out separate so it's really clear that people can see that. And that was our intent.
Very good. Any comments from the board? Hearing, none. Any comments from the public? Is the, is the council comfortable with the way it's written?
Yes.
I take it I have a majority there. So, that is that change and then we'll go to page 112.
Yeah, 112, Mike, is, was the request by Alex Graham to, for consideration of allowing multiple family dwelling as a conditional use in the, in the Otter Creek Basin District.
Council, any comments on the land's worth?
Wouldn't, the shade roller mill David Chlansky's property, wouldn't that, that's in the Basin District.
Yep.
Didn't he have some permits for multiple family there?
He did.
Or what are condominiums called?
Well, one of the things, Bill, that, that is a change, in the old regulations, there was this, there was a section 903, I think it was, that said that all mixed development is a planned unit development. And some of us are, we're almost wondering what that section was trying to do because really, because really planned unit development, in my opinion, is a method of development. It's not really a use. It's, it's a method, like a, you know, you could do a conventional subdivision or you could do a planned unit development. So, the way that the old regulations were written in that, the old regulations for the Otter Creek Basin District did not include multiple family dwelling, but it, but it did have a provision for a planned unit development. And then, when you went to 903 and, and it said that all mixed-use development is a PUD, it just seemed kind of funny to, to make somebody have some little commercial component in their, in their building to meet the mixed-unit development clause and therefore have it become considered a planned unit development. I, I think it was feeling...
Kind of convoluted.
Let's just cut to the chase.
Yeah, okay.
And the cut to the chase is, is multiple family dwelling a reasonable use in that district? And when, and when you think about, you know, the uses that are in, that are in that district, the Mace Building is one that comes to mind, you know, obviously, the Edison County Community Trust was, was at one time for, for units. The, the proposed use of the Havlin Shade Roller certainly, you know, certainly on multiple family. So, you know, the Planning Commission supported, supported that request.
I think it makes perfect sense. I just couldn't figure out why it was changed this way, but that explains it, so it's good.
Any other comments, questions from the council for verification of what that means? Or any comments from the public? Hearing, none. Is the council comfortable with the way that's written?
Yep.
Okay, that, I'd like to ask at this point in time, is there any other comments on the total proposal as been presented that anybody would like to talk about or I should say testify about? Hearing no other testimony at this point, I will close the hearing, the public hearing, and I would offer to the council a couple options. Deal with item 9A on the agenda at this time, or wait until we get down there. So, your, your purpose.
I'd like to deal with it now.
Okay? Someone make the motion to adopt as finalized?
I make the motion that we adopt the proposed zoning and subdivision regulations as written, as proposed.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for any discussion. Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Great job.
Good job, guys.
That means I don't have to read this tonight, go to sleep, right? Fantastic. Okay, we're going to go right into our council meeting. Item number four, visitors, and in between, some emails, something got lost, so I've inserted Aaron from Edward Jones who had requested to use the green on July 24th from 3:00 to 4:00 for an ice cream social. Aaron, I'd give you just whatever you need, the time, as brief as possible. Describe what your intent is and then we'll ask for motion from the council, either pass it or deny it.
Yes.
You can speak right from there or...
All right. Aaron Robertson with Edward Jones. We want to put up a little canopy, a table, two flavors of ice cream, four toppings, free to the public. That's about it. One hour.
Anybody have any questions, Barry?
No.
What day?
It's actually July 24th.
July 24th.
Tuesday.
Which is a Tuesday. 3:00 to 4:00.
I'm sad to say that ice cream's one of my weaknesses, but I'm not going to be around.
I'll make sure to go to the bank.
Joe? You can have my part. How's that?
Mine too.
Okay, have a motion?
I make said motion that we approve Aaron's request.
I have one quick question now. Would this fall under the policy for the city green once that is approved?
Well, actually, it falls, it actually, it actually falls under the current policy because, because, as a for-profit. And Joan doesn't have the authority to schedule for-profits. This is a weird one because he's not making any money on this ice cream, but anyway, Edward Jones is not a nonprofit organization. That's the problem.
I have a motion and did I have a second?
Second.
Ziggy, you have a second. Further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go see Aaron on the 24th and enjoy the ice cream. Okay, next item, we're going to talk about warrants.
As I mentioned, there was two sets of warrants, one being the last, you know, we paid every bill we could find at the last meeting on June 26th, I think it was, and then there was three other bills that show, didn't really show up, but we have to settle up with the state of Vermont for fishing licenses, marriage licenses, and something else probably. So, we have to keep those separate because those checks are dated on or before June 30. And then, obviously, the other set are bills that have, that have come in and were processed this evening.
I have one question and I'm not sure that you have an answer for this, but in the set of bills, there's Patina Antica for the pizzas.
Sure. Pizza, actually, that's...
And the owner's a friend of mine, so, but I was just wondering why the pizzas were, were bought from a shelter business as opposed to a, unless they were giving a contribution and this is just part of it.
You know, I don't know, you know, first off, obviously, the pizzas were for, were for the fishing derby. And I actually don't have the details specifically as to why. My guess is, is that, that there was a bit of a donation there, but I really don't have the specific details. You know, I really let the committee run that whole thing and as long as they, they break even or better, it's fine with me, but I agree though, Randy, that I, I hope that there was certainly an opportunity with other, with the other, with a local vendor.
And to emphasize for people that are here and ones at home that may not have heard this, the last, at the last, from the last meeting, they gave out, the committee worked extremely hard and they gave out somewhere between $9,000 and $10,000 in prizes.
That's great.
So, well deserved, well deserved.
One quick question. I thought I saw when I signed the warrants, there was a bill from Mike Forte?
Yep.
Ford Computer.
Yep. He, he actually is our IT person for police.
Okay. It said, it said like monthly maintenance and software was like $1,000 and I was wondering what his, what the difference was. Is that a, that seemed like a lot of money for monthly maintenance.
The bill is, the bill for the year is $1,740.
Okay.
Okay, that's, I mean, I, the bill, I know, the bill that I signed was 1,740.
Okay.
So, that, that really covers his, in essence, on-call IT work. Because their systems totally...
It's not a monthly bill. That's what I was curious about.
No, 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 no.
Okay. So, any other questions with warrants? If not, I had asked for a motion for the Virgin City Council meeting on June 26th. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Randy makes a motion, Randy seconds it. Any omissions, corrections, errors? Hearing, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go carry. Next item, budget.
You're bored. I'm just going to briefly say something about, about budget report. I have two budget reports here. One of them is, is the budget report as of, for last fiscal year, as of June 30th, and then I have another budget report here that reflects the expenses that have been paid since July 1. And I have this here and I didn't bother copying it and the main reason why I didn't bother copying, copying it is because probably 80% of the bills that you sign, even though they're, they're July checks, they're really for expenses that occurred in June, all right? And so, what happens is, is all of those bills get paid and then we have to do journal entry and, and book accounts payable from the previous year and push all of those expenses into the, into the prior year. So, I'm sitting here with two budget reports with all of these expenses that really belong over here and actually, you know, some of this revenue that came in in, in July is really June revenue. So, I, I do these really for the, for the, for my purpose that results in doing more work within the next few days to push this into, into the right year. So, in August, you'll get something that is a bit more meaningful. The other thing, you know, Bill mentioned at the last meeting, that's something that we, we just have never made a practice of sharing and that is to provide the city council on, on a quarterly basis, our trial balance, which is something much more than just our budget. It takes, it documents all of the various funds that we have and so, what are, I, you know, I'd like to think that, you know, we can get, we can get you that, you know, for the next meeting, but, but again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of journal entries that have to occur to get the, to get the actual balance of each fund, each separate fund as to what it, what its balance was on the 1st of July, but our intention is to be able to have that. And we can suppress zeros. It'll, it'll be, you know, between 15 and 20 pages long. I'm sorry about that. There isn't a way to make it any, any shorter, but I think it, if we have time at the next meeting, you know, maybe I could, you know, give a little bit of a, of a workshop so that there's, is a little better comfort at, at reviewing a trial balance. It didn't, the trial balance actually incorporates a budget report, so it's not like you're going to get a budget report and a trial balance. It is actually, it's, it's actually contained within that as well.
Okay. Any other questions, Mel? If not, next item is committee reports. I'm actually going to start calling names and asking about subjects. My wife decided to make me even more challenged. She's starting to supply me something to use so I don't forget. Forgetting to dig this out of the packet is the hardest part. Randy, anything updates or anything changed on Fishing Derby?
Well, yeah, there was email floating around that, no, there's no change.
Okay. No change.
Well, it's a good thing that it was floating around. It was Fishing Derby.
Was there a pun intended? Okay.
There, there we go. There.
Boy, you upset her. I can see that. Ziggy, senior citizens, anything to, what's happening?
I just get feedback, I see them on the streets or something right now. They're still trying to get organized over there and getting their meals set up and, but it's coming along.
I actually ran into one resident and said that they're having some difficulties over there popping circuit breakers and whatnot. I actually talked to one of the guys that worked on the project and he kind of gave me a feeling as to what may, might be the cause of, of the whole situation. So, I haven't had a chance to talk with anybody or Mel, but it's, it's nothing threatening. It's just there's safety devices that are tripping and so, they're real sensitive.
I did, they did have one question they asked me, a couple of them. All the, well, you may not know the answer then, coming around the bend where all that tall grass is, what, they wanted to know if there was an intent of something ever going to be built there. I've had several people ask me that and I...
On the right, as, before you get to them, on the right?
Yeah, on the right.
No.
Not that I know of. The only place I know is possibly where the old barn was right across from there. Is that right?
Correct. Correct. Yep. Those are the two locations, almost straight off the end of their building, maybe a little bit towards Main Street, hopefully Phase 2.
Yeah.
And then, the childcare center hopefully over by the, by the, where the barn used to be.
So, okay, because they were just wondering if, you know, the way it looked, it was very shabby out there and I said, you'll have to talk to your own people or whoever takes care of that because I don't think you're...
I think you'll find that some of it is, was, there was a wetlands delineation.
Right.
And that, the result of that is that there was, some of that has been delineated and it's very possible that they either will not be able to touch it or they can only brushhog it once a year. I don't, I don't know, the state regulates that a little bit.
Because there's a lot of bugs and mosquitoes coming out through there and they say it's real bad over there. So, I said, talk to your group that has it.
Right, right.
That's all I can say.
Mosquitoes are bad all over this year. Okay, thank you, Ziggy. Joe, Recreation Committee.
A couple of things, I understand that they, I've been down to see it, but the basketball court's been repaved. I don't know if it's been marked.
I think it's just been paved. There's a subcontractor that does the paving. They did that, I want to say last Thursday or Friday. So, that's, that part is done and so, we're waiting for the, the company that actually does the, the coating and the insulation of the basketball hoops themselves.
I did speak to Barry about that light. That light is on a lot.
Barry McDonald?
It's been on, and he said he'd stop down and look at it.
Okay.
So, I don't know if it's got a photo eye or the timer.
This is the one that's attached to this?
This is the one, the high one, the higher light. It lights up everything.
Puts it on, is it on the hut?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
So, did the inside of the bathrooms get taken care of?
Was there a problem?
Talking about the, you're talking about the, yeah, those are done.
I saw something in the warrants that it had been done, right?
The, yes, it's done. The, the changing rooms, if you will, that's, that was completed, whatever the swim meet was, if it was Thursday or Friday, but then, yeah, that's completed. That's done.
The only other thing is that Mayor and his lovely wife and I met with Cheryl Brinkman and Scott Gaines down in the outdoor classroom, kind of reviewed their plan for that and I haven't had a chance to follow up since I spoke with you on Sunday.
And the only thing I'd like to try to get done there, and I'm sure we could get CHP support, I'd be willing to talk to them over there and I think Mel would probably pull more weight than I could, of if somebody would mark out where the trail was, I'm sure that we could get them to go over and do some testing of their equipment to cut the trails back where they were.
Yep.
So, then the trick would be maintaining them afterwards that, but, yes. So, if you have a way to push that, or if you have a way to push that, marking.
Mark and Joe talk to Cheryl.
Okay. Good. So, again, we'll offer, I'll offer any support that Mel and I can give to get that done once the trail's all marked. I'm sure we can make that happen, even if I have to steal my son-in-law's tractor. Okay, the other, okay, we, okay, there was, any luck on any dog parks?
Haven't heard any, there's no, no progress on that. I was also reviewing the minutes and we talked about the skate park bench in Mural and he was supposed to forward me a, some diagrams. I haven't, I haven't seen anything, so I'll contact him and see if we can follow up on that.
One of the concerns, my wife works most of the days out of home on computer and she's able to take a, a break and sit on the back deck or whatever and she's noticed a lot, a lot of dogs using, and I don't know who can address this, owners and dogs, it'll go down across the little league field in the elementary school and the dogs will make their deposits and the owners won't pick up the droppings. So, I don't know whether it has to be the school board that takes action on that, but that's not very good for what the fields are being used for down there. We can come up with other ways of fertilizing the field. We won't talk about the, okay, we're good there. Peter, Energy Committee, any, anything happen there? Peter, Energy Committee, any, anything happen there?
I have finally freed up my schedules so that I now have, I now have, can go to the meetings, bottom line. Last meeting was at the beginning of July, so I have to be able to.
If I get, if I continue to get emails, I will share the, share them with you. Any luck on working with Mel on city finances as far as salaries?
We haven't started that, no.
Okay.
But the, I can tell you that the, the salary surveys are here, and I actually, just as soon as we get one, they actually fill out another one. And I just got one the other day, and I, I don't know what their turnaround time is, is on new, new salary schedules, but, you know, I don't, we really probably shouldn't wait, we shouldn't wait, we should get, get moving on that.
Alright, thank you. Randy, I understand you're the chair of the, the new location for a police station, do you wanna speak to that effect?
Yes, I drew the short straw.
I was just quick on the draw.
Yes, we had a meeting last night, actually, and it was to select a chair, and also to look to see whether we were going to seek any bond vote. We don't feel we've got enough information to really do that, other than getting some information from either Mel or Joan or both about the timing, if we were to do it, you know, what, what has to be filed and when, whether there's sufficient time to deal with that. Other than that, it was really looking at what our next steps would be, and the committee chose not to really push the approval of the New Haven Road property at this point. That probably, I guess primarily my fault, because I, I wasn't able to meet for the last meeting, and that one, that was when the discussion was on that particular site. At this point anyhow, I'm the dissenting vote on that location. I may be convinced, maybe after spending some time with Mel and looking at the, the plot plan and where the building might be located anyways there, I could be convinced. But having dealt with locating public safety buildings in past lives, I think location is a very important thing, and, and locating a, a, a police facility primarily because we happen to own the land, I don't think is, is a good reason. It might end up being there, but I think we need to do a little bit more exploration. So, we will be looking for more information, and at the next meeting, we'll probably deal with some alternative sites, if we even find some alternative sites, but, so that's it.
Well, I think one is coming off the scoreboard. I don't know if it's been announced officially, but there, there's a potentially closing on Kennedy Brothers early in August. Okay, so, take it as a rumor right now, not factual?
Location of a facility, particularly a police facility, should be in a very easily accessible point for the public and, and very obvious when you're going through the community. And I don't think the New Haven Road site meets that, but then again, I'm not fully acquainted with it, and there may be some other sites that are available.
I know we got several emails, and not all of them from citizens, against that location. So, again, I shared that with everyone, if you don't have it and you want it again, I'll be more than happy to clear out my computer and put it on yours. Let's see. Okay, Bill, you had a bunch of goals, and I don't know if you wanna touch base on any of them, steward of nature, resources, downtown parking issues, we should really buy Ziggy's lot and rebuild it.
I agree.
Double deck, you know.
I think Ziggy should lease it to us for a dollar a year.
Whatever, whatever, we're.
He'll take care of the live building issues.
Make it, make it two-story.
Buy the building, you have to watch.
I don't want to. Do have an item on my, that has nothing to do with that, but this is a good topic.
Go for it, yes, it is.
I've been in touch with Eric Cohn, who was the former director of the Maritime Museum, in the last month, and the Lois McClure is on a three-month tour of the canal in New York State and the Rishikesh and St. Lawrence rivers and so on. And they are gonna finish their tour on October twelfth in Virgens. And he asked me if Virgens would be interested in trying to put together some type of a celebration to end this tour, and apparently, there are a lot of entities that would be willing to partner on this. I guess one of the funding sources was the Canadian consulate in Boston. He thinks that the governor's office, that some of the senators' offices would like to be a part of some, something along with, you know, some New York State delegations. So, there might be some funds available, it would be probably a one-day type of thing during the day, because they don't have any power in the boat. So, I'm just bringing it up, I talked to Eric, the co-director, a couple of days ago. They're very excited about doing something, I think they would like to understand that is Virgens willing to at least host a celebration, and, you know, if we could be a partner to it, great. So, I'm not sure, I may talk to the partnership about it, I'm not sure if the Recreation Committee or anyone else would like to kind of be a member of this organization, but that's, I'm just bringing it to the table.
Yep, I appreciate that, I actually found out about it first on Saturday. Representative Lampier mentioned it to me, I did have a conversation with Kevin Rooney a little bit about it, he's aware about it. I, I agree, that is, like I said, that is a Friday. I'd like to see something done, yes.
They'll be here for a couple of days, it could be a Saturday.
I don't know if we could either get some band members from the high school or other organizations to do something. In October, you never know what you're gonna get, it might be snow. By all means, that's, that's a good point, thank you for bringing that up, Bill. But yes, let's not let that drop, I don't know who we need to strike together for yet another meeting, but.
Well, I can stay in touch with Eric and see where, I mean, they certainly are in touch with a lot of these folks more than we would be typically.
I guess my question is, who should be applying for the funds? Is it the city, is it the partnership? Who wants to really spearhead this?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
I don't expect us to pay for much of anything, but I think that if we have the space and are willing to help out and have the park, you know, have that area nicely prepared and so on, and helping some local entertainment, that's great.
It would be nice, because we would wanna work with our city crew to make sure that if we need to leave some dockage in for that exercise, it would make life a lot easier, so we could actually park it at the city.
Well, I'll find out more in the next meeting.
Sure, excellent, you share with us as you get the information, please. Okay, we're gonna jump down to, oh, me next, wow, hang on, you guys got about two hours? Lighting the falls, I set it up with the police department that anybody goes out of here that doesn't go to sit down to the falls tonight, they'll get a ticket, okay? No, kidding, if you have chance, drive down the falls, we got a little minor little get glitch with the changing of the lights, they're constant now, but they will be up soon, changing colors. It's really a pretty sight, and they're supposed to come on about ten minutes to nine, quarter to nine. It's, the darker it is, the prettier, you know, the better the lighting is, but it's, it's good, very good. And all three falls are lit. Wanna comment and thank Marguerite for her usual fantastic operation on, on Saturday for French Heritage Day. Funding for that is getting harder and harder to come by for her, so we need to keep that in mind as we go forward. Report on the number of boats, got an early number, June was actually up, it was about five boats last year, it's up to forty boats this year, and the month of June, or July is equal, if not slightly ahead, of where it was last year. So, also to let everybody know, because we did support the Opera House and the partnership, I have sent emails off to both heads, and I've told them that it would be very nice that they will be present at quarterly, in every quarter and present some sort of report as to how things are going, okay? Just to let you know, just over the last month, we've had three hundred and twenty-one hits on our internet. I asked the wife, is that average? She says, I don't, I don't know, 'cause she didn't remember what the previous month was, but we're getting some active activity. If anybody's got any ideas as far as improvements or change on the internet, please contact us. Mel, you got it then on the DRB Plan Commission, or any of your?
The, the personnel policy, you, you put a set of deadlines for me for a barbecue at the end of August, that that has to be completed. And, you know, this one I'm working with Peter on. And we're, we are continuing to work on the zoning files, that's a never-ending project there. And the comparing, I, I need to actually, I do need to develop this list, because one of the things I wanted to do on comparing budgets to other five communities, I've always wanted to do that in advance of the budget process. So, I'm gonna stick my neck out and guarantee you that I will have a five-community comparison prior to delivery of a budget, of the budget next May. Obviously, if I can get it done sooner, it'll, it'll get to you, but I, I just need to send, I actually have at least a couple towns in my, in my mind. I, I wanna find full-service communities, obviously, you know, they, you know, police, fire, you know, doesn't have to be owned, the fire department doesn't have to be owned by the town, but, you know, similar services that we offer, police, fire, water, sewer, you know, sidewalks, this type of thing. And I, I think of, you know, Fair Haven as being an example, Newport, however, they might be a little bit too large. We also wanna have them be of similar size, size to us, so I'm gonna give myself that, that deadline, Mike.
Super. Joan, you talked about improving the office and offering debit or credit cards for walk-in for payment of taxes, marriage licenses, is on and on, so, any luck on that?
No, nothing's been started yet.
Have you, do we need to hold a, a workday to help with the clean out of the back room and the garage?
No, someone needs to know what they're throwing out, we have retention schedules we have to follow.
Well, I just, we.
Yeah, that's a good winner project.
Okay, alright, so that's that for now, and I thank everybody for indulging my, you know, giving some patience to hear that, but I think we owe that to the voters, once we start making commitments. No problem, not a problem whatsoever. Now we'd offer a public comment, but if it has to do with city green, that's the next subject after we get through public comment. So, anybody here have any public comment that they'd like to offer? Having hearing none, we're gonna go right into old business and proposal of the policy on the city green. Okay, it went up on the website, I believe, Sunday morning. We've got some responses from Hannah, we've got responses from Peter. It really is my intent to kinda take it paragraph by paragraph to see if there's any changes, so that we don't start throwing papers and juggling three or four different copies. So, I'm not sure which one I started with. Okay, so, city green policy, the first paragraph, council members, is there anything in there that you don't agree with, and if you don't agree with it, we asked, I had asked you to bring some written verbiage to support what you want there.
The word north should be inserted in front of green.
I think it's about North Street, I think it's about.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I see what you mean.
It's North Green Street.
Okay, yep, okay.
By North Green Street, North Park.
North Street, yeah.
Park in Maine.
Should we include the word streets there, just?
I, I think we should.
Make it simple.
Okay, so we're gonna add the word street as well. Any other changes in that paragraph? I take it we don't really need to. Anybody in, that would like to offer anything from the public at this point? We'll do the same thing as we did on the other one, that way you have a chance to voice as we go, okay? That way we don't have to backtrack, hopefully. Alright, this next line, we shouldn't have much discussion, as it is Article One, special use policy. I think everybody agrees with that? Hey, we're getting technical. Alright, next one, next paragraph, special use reference, any verbiage there, Randy?
I suggest adding in after activities a slash and then the word events, so it's activities slash events.
Council members, by all mean, if you don't agree with it, that's your opportunity to speak up on any of this. Again, we wanna discuss this once. Any other changes or other, anybody that disagrees with what Randy has offered? No, it's public, any comments whatsoever?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there going to be, I'm sorry, Donna Scott, Virgens and North Ferrisburg. I was wondering, in this section, it doesn't specifically say, but do you, are you going to have events pre-scheduled every year in to be logged in?
No, I don't believe so.
That was, that, that part was taken out at the last.
So, there'd be no scheduled events, like Memorial Day, that will be always on the calendar?
All I'm gonna say was requested, well, the, the discussion at a couple of meetings ago was anything that's considered a city event. This is about, it's like, this is not a policy requiring the city to grant itself permission, alright? So, the, there was, there was a list that was, that was created a few months ago that actually included all of the normal city events and other events that were not coordinated by the city, and it was decided to remove that entire list. Anything that is a city event, the city would just schedule it, and it's like I said, the city doesn't have to grant itself permission for a event, the city just schedules it. Anything that is not a city event would have to go through that process. So, like, like for instance, the strawberry festival, the strawberry festival is not a city event. The strawberry festival, actually, just as they have in the past, they would schedule that time with, through the city clerk. So, there's, so there's no pre-approved list of non-city events.
Right, it's gonna have to be thirty days before.
We're, we're gonna get to that, Donna.
Well, I just wondered if that was part of the, that was only, if the thirty days can only apply to.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get to that later as we go paragraph by paragraph, I don't wanna jump around.
Sure.
If the intent is for, to say non-city events, why don't we say it, non-city events, since, if that, is that what we're saying? Rather than trying to delineate what those events might be, if it's for all non-city events, seems like it'd be more straightforward.
Should say special use for non-city activities events on the city green? Or non-city sponsored?
Well, I think some of those city events that we consider city events aren't necessarily sponsored by the city, but they consider them a city event.
French Heritage Day's a good example.
The Legion does the Memorial Day Parade.
Although this, this section, I, I, I see what he's saying, but this section has been in existence for quite a while, and we, we haven't had any problem with these types of events. It's really, when we get into the display part, it's the little more difficult thing to deal with.
Like if you try to delineate, then we're back to Donna's question, her comment. Like, for instance, Memorial Day Parade, you're saying now it is not a city.
It, it really isn't, it's Legions that puts, that sponsors it.
It's not, yeah, it's not sponsored by us, but I would consider it a city event.
A city sanctioned, city sanctioned event if nothing else, yeah.
That's not a bad way to put it, maybe. That's not a bad way to put it, maybe.
But, or then we gonna start, no, 'cause we don't.
Well, anything you approve will be sanctioned, wouldn't it? If you want to, you know.
I know, we're, 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 we're trying to meet.
I understand.
A requirement, and I don't know how far we wanna split hairs here, uh, but still try to keep, keep it the KISS method, so that we don't drive ourselves to, uh, the, the wrong place to visit, as in the nut house. As Mel has indicated to me personally, that, you know, it, it's hard writing for seven, but it's also harder to write for two-hundred-and-fifty-seven. So, uh, what we're gonna try to do is come up with a, a common, uh, approach, so that it best fits, and then, um, then at that point, we will take and look at it a year down the road, and as we should with all of our policies, and make sure that we're in compliance, and if we're not, then we need to make adjustments. So, go ahead, Bill first, and Joan.
Well, I, I think I know where you're coming from, but what's the purpose? What are you trying to get at, in terms of changing that?
Well, some clarity, because under special use refers to activities on the City Green by nonprofit community service organizations, church groups, for-profit entities, or wedding ceremonies. Then, in the next paragraph, you're saying, "Other than for-profit entities or other organized groups, all activities slash events for the City Green must be scheduled through the city clerk, who will maintain a schedule and avert conflicts by scheduling uses on a first-come, first-served basis." So, do people go to the city clerk? And then further down, it says, "Any use for, per, by a for-profit entity or organized groups", what, who, who is that? Shall acquire the approval of the city council? So, it's confusing, because it doesn't really say, should people go directly to the town clerk to get approval? Or do they have to come to the, um, select board for approval?
Joan, did you wanna comment, or you want?
Well, my point was gonna be, uh, and, and I know we're getting ahead, 'cause we're, uh, further down, there's a statement that says, "The city of Virgens does not, not endorse nor oppose any gathering or expression", and I still contend that city sanctioned events are separate from what this document is designed to, um, uh, have control over.
Correct. Rennie?
Well, I, the confusing part, I think, is the wording, and I think Hannah did the same thing as I, I marked, is it says, "Other organized groups", I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I think you strike that.
And, and I don't know what, why it's in there. I was gonna suggest striking it, uh, and just deal with the, the other for-profit entities, which have to go to the council for approval for the for-profit entities. Other than that, it's the normal, just schedule it with Joan.
Okay, so what is it that you clarify what you want struck? So that everybody.
Well, there, there are two places. It, it, uh, in the second paragraph, it says, "Other than for-profit entities", and then it says, "Or organized groups", which I don't know what that means, strike that. Or other organized groups.
I agree. I'm trying to find where we are.
Sit that up, paragraph.
Okay, yep.
And then, uh, in the next line, it has similar wording, and again, strike organized groups.
That was definitely unclear, does that work? For you, if you strike that, at least it, it makes the for-profit go to the council, the others are, are part of the policy.
That helps greatly, however, it doesn't establish any, um, any process. Do people go to Joan first, or do they come through you?
Always go with Joan.
They all go with Joan.
The pro- the for-profit entities must come to the council, everybody else goes through Joan.
Right, but Joan, go, ask her, and then she'll direct you where to go, either in front of us, or she'll take it.
Right, that's a good point, too.
Yeah, because ask her every time.
Joan's good at that.
I think, uh, you know, to me, the only, you know, one of the things, uh, you know, 'cause there was a list of, there was a list of city events on here, it was taken off. And the reason why it was taken off, as I mentioned, we don't need to give permission ourselves. That's not to say that that, that Joan's calendar isn't gonna be, that Joan's calendar is going to be first populated by city events, it's just automatic. And as a matter of fact, if, if, if there is an event that the city has always held on Virgens Day, and for some reason Joan puts it on the wrong Saturday, and somebody schedules that, I can tell you, they'll be removed. Because the city of Vir- the, the city council controls that park. They may not like it, but the city, the, the, the city's gonna control its events. The only, the only thing that I think that would be helpful here, is similar to the displays, is, is, is about, when, that they go to Joan not more than sixty days in advance. I mean, so that, it's not like they can, they can come three years early. So, scheduled through the city clerk, no greater than sixty days in advance of the, of the event. And that really, um, you know, similar to displays, it ma- makes it so that they're, they're not coming in in December and booking things, uh.
The next December?
And, and the year, and three years after that.
We're starting to scramble here, we should've brought a laptop or something, where we could put it up on the screen.
Hannah?
Yes?
Addressing that also, um, Mary Harris. Wouldn't it clarify things if in that first paragraph, it was just stated nonprofit? Forget all the rest of the adjectives, et cetera? And then the next two paragraphs are dealing with for-profit?
It, uh, Mike, that would help some, but, uh, the piece that's been left out with the edits that you've got now is a group that's not an official nonprofit, a group of citizens that just wanna do something. Uh, and, and the example that's cited in the setting, the sentence ahead, is a wed- wedding ceremonies. That would be a nonprofit or, uh, for-profit, it's an organized group. So somehow, with the language changes that have been proposed, that those entities have been left out.
I'm wondering if, my name is Jason Perel, and I'm wondering, um, if, if this, Article One actually articulates in, in some way, the de facto practices of the city of Virgens today? Is this not what we are currently doing?
Yeah, that's what we do.
This isn't reflecting any change that we're missing, is that what we do? And have done for, you know, for many years, right?
Yes, right.
Okay, just thank you for that.
Qualify what we're doing, so, that's, that's what the purpose of that was. But, now's the time to change it, if we're gonna change it. So.
Well, there, there haven't been any, this is the current policy, and there haven't been any issues with it.
No.
No.
So, why change it, at all?
Other than, yeah, the addition of one word that Rennie wanted to add.
Yeah. Activities slash events?
Well, what about organized groups, Deleesh?
Oh, that's, I mean, the first paragraph there.
Yep.
Yeah, I.
So, if you ever have any questions, you have to start, because you always start with the city clerk, and then she can tell you what.
I also, also understand, uh.
Yeah, definitely agree with that, too.
Understand her point, that, um, you need to make sure that you give a starting point, and hopefully, we do that at some point down later.
You could also, maybe stay it as for-profit, you go this way, all other entities, this way.
That, that means we're gonna rewrite the document, and our, in our efforts, we're hoping to. We were hope to pa- I was in hopes that we pass this tonight, okay? Instead of rewriting it tonight, because.
But, Mike, she, they're still gonna have to go to Joanie to bring it in front of us anyways.
I realize that, I realize that.
That's where it would start and end, right there.
We, we keep going in circles, I mean, we've been at this since when? Let's, let's, let's put it to bed, we should, it shouldn't take.
First tent.
It says city clerk, that's what I'm saying, what's there should stay there, and it goes to Joanie.
But they're saying in the beginning, it doesn't clarify that they also should go to the city clerk.
Right, and that's what we just told her, that's the city clerk, period.
But you have to show it, and.
That was written in the first.
You, you have to say it in, in, in both areas about city clerk, and did you add that, Mel?
Well, it says, "All activities for the City Green must be scheduled through the city clerk."
Okay, so it, it is there?
It's there.
Alright. So, to finalize any change, we're, the only thing that's, a- as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, the only thing that's gonna be changed is slash events, after the word activities?
And if you do, if you do that, it should be in two places, I just noticed, because you, it was just read. It says, "All activities", probably should say, "All activities slash events".
Events, yeah.
We're not gonna strike organized groups? Because I like that, I like striking it.
But an organized group can be like students at the high school, like the Students for Peace, and they wanna come up and just do a sit-in for an hour. I guess that would be.
They're a nonprofit, they're not a, so.
They're an organized group, or the, well, those.
An educational institution would be a nonprofit, you could argue that, I think.
Think we can defend that, Mel?
Well, I mean, it's really, you know, the key is that if it's, you know, really, I think what, the way that this has historically worked, if it's for-profit, if it, it comes here, if it's, if it's not-for-profit, Joan is allowed to schedule that.
That's correct.
And, and, and so I, you know.
Yeah, we take out other organized groups?
So just all, yeah, that's all that needs to be changed, right?
In two places, if it's.
So you're gonna strike, you're gonna strike that?
Right.
Yep, yep, you got it.
Okay, so, alright, so, in that.
It's implied, huh?
Special use referred, uh, to activities slash events, that's the only change in there. Next paragraph down, we jumped ahead on that one, and we're striking, uh, after entities and/or other organized groups. That's coming out of there?
Mm-hmm, fine, yeah, come out.
Okay?
Yeah.
Alright, any other changes in that paragraph?
Peter added the word "basis" there, there was a.
Where again, Peter?
We've only lacked that word for thirty-four years, Peter, but thanks for catching that.
No, some, somebody, somebody read that section, put "basis" in, I mean, it's like.
Oh, okay.
This is in the second paragraph.
Basis on the very end. Alright, basis on the very end. Alright, that's added.
Oh.
Alright.
Are we doing anything about the timing?
That's, that's Peter's proposal.
We're, we're.
Oh, the sixty-day thing?
We're, we're not there yet.
Why don't you steal one of those first three paragraphs?
Yeah.
And then.
What's that?
If you just deal with the first three paragraphs.
Yeah, yep.
Because it doesn't, and then my suggestion can.
Yep, we'll get down, we'll get down there, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Uh, so, everybody good with the first paragraph being special use referred? Council members? Any discussion?
I'm sorry, what?
Other than for-profit, any discussion? Or, okay, the way we have amended it, corrected it, changed it, whatever you wanna call it?
Changes are fine.
Alright, any use by, for, not, or for-profit entities, any changes there?
Remove or organized groups.
Or as groups? Or as organized groups?
Yep.
Strike that, okay. Nothing to be changed in Article Two displays, on that wording? Go to the next.
Wait, 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 I've, I've got a.
There's a insert.
In Article One.
On Peter's.
In Article One.
Okay, insert for Peter.
Well, I wanted to discuss the, uh, and, in the displays, we've put a period of time during which the displays can last.
Hmm?
And, um, I'm, I am thinking, although I can't think, obviously, there hasn't been an instance that's come to mind, but, um, if you don't have a timeframe under the special uses policy, somebody could have the park for two, three, four, five weeks, for some sort of event going on and on.
Thought a sit-in would last forty-five days.
But that's not, that doesn't change the section.
Okay.
So my, my suggestion was forty-eight hours.
Okay.
And again.
Good point, yeah.
Yep.
Fine, weekend?
No use shall be for a period of longer than forty-eight hours.
Is, are, is council members comfortable with that?
We're, we're inserting that.
Are you gonna insert it at the, just above where Article Two display, that wording?
Yeah, just above Article Two.
So the activities or events are limited to forty-eight hours?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna leave that part on the council table, not open it up for the public. Alright, um, Article Two displays, uh, paragraph that starts with, "The city of Virgens is a municipality", any changes in that paragraph?
That's the one, Mike, that I wrote that establishes this committee. Uh, this was what the, I believe this is what the council, uh, by consensus directed back on May eighth. So it's a three-member committee, uh, and would be the city clerk, if, if, if the clerk is absent, it would be the assistant clerk. Likewise, uh, someone from the DRB, and someone from the recreation committee, and there'd be alternate, so that presumably there would, we would always have three people when Joan needed to call a meeting.
And I, and I strongly feel, and unless some council member opposes me, I, I respect that. I, I think this should, this part of the, the, uh, policy should be left on the council table to make the decision. Does anybody have any, uh, changes, corrections in that area? Rennie?
Well, the only suggestion I would have is that if you take the part of the paragraph that starts, "Applications are reviewed", all the way down to the, to the bottom of the paragraph, and, and, and move it from there to after, um, number one. It seems like it fits better, because it just starts talking about the application review board, but it hasn't talked about what an application is. So if we moved it to, uh, where number one, you start talking about, you have to file an application, you have to put name and, and, uh, and display and everything else, and then, in that same paragraph at the end, have all of that as, uh, how the application is actually handled. It's just, it's not changing the wording, it's just moving it to a different spot.
Mel?
You're, are you, are you creating a number one, or just putting ahead of number one?
Kinda putting it at the end of number one, right? At the end of number one.
Making it part of number one, it's just continues.
It's just, it's just, it seems like it would flow better, once you've started talking about applications, then you, then you say, this is the process for which, how the application, the application is actually processed.
I guess I would suggest, after reviewing that, that you might include it in paragraph, rather than do it after one, include it in paragraph four.
And why?
Because it talks about each step of the application, and, and then this paragraph talks about how, how the applications are reviewed. "On determination, the commission shall act on the application", you know, I, I don't.
It probably could go in subsequent occasions.
It could, yeah, it could go in either one, I, I just, I just didn't think it'd fit there, but it could. As long as it's following after people know that we have an application process. Being a spot.
I, yeah, I guess, you know, I, I was, I, I tried to get this thing to flow a little better, and, and tried to think of, tried to write it in such, tried to write it as the reader, alright? And so I really felt that right out of the gate, applicants knew, before they even talked about, about the, the process, it was about who, who this is going to. And, you know, whether or not, you know, whether or not the, you know, the creation of this board is a separate paragraph, I mean, it could be, it could be a separate paragraph, um, you know, 'cause, yeah, we, we have this application board, and then we have some policy here, and then the application process. So, you know, I, I don't have any problem, Rennie, grab, like what you suggested, grabbing that chunk and putting it above number one.
Oh, above number, yeah.
Above number one.
Okay.
Not numbered, but basically letting people know that, you know, here, here's, here's this board that you're gonna need to, uh, make a presentation to, as opposed to embedding it further. I wanted it right out, right out, out of the gate.
That's a good compromise, yeah, I'll live with that.
Yeah. Any council members' comments? I'm gonna all put up a can of worms. Public, any comments? Did you live with that? I guess we can live with that.
Yeah, 'cause I think that the second part really is not about an application, that, that, that after that, Rennie, here, that the next few, the next few sections really don't have anything to do with application. So I think that that does belong above, um.
Yeah, and it, and it comes after the city council adopts the following policy. Here's the committee, yeah.
That's correct, right.
Okay, so in that paragraph, "The city of Virgens is a municipality", we're gonna take the, from, "Applications are reviewed", and move it to just above number one in the City Green hereby, uh, hereby adopts the following policy related, relating to displays, okay? So that's agreed upon by the council, correct?
Where are we putting it, sorry?
It's gonna go above number one, you see number one down the bottom page?
Oh, here.
It's gonna go right in that, well, real line. Alright. There's gotta be an easier way to do this.
It's, we're almost there.
Yep.
Flip it over the page.
You don't, I should've brought some of that Virgens wine, we could have a celebration over that later. Okay, the, uh, next sentence, "City of Virgens does not endorse nor oppose", I know that Peter has something there.
I, that, to me, that's grammatically awkward. So I. So I, without changing the, the content of it, the city of Vergens neither endorses nor opposes, any gathering or expression?
I guess I must be an old vermaata. As, this old vermaata doesn't have a problem with it, but, I could be persuaded.
Well.
Either, either way, I mean, this is where you guys.
It gets the point across.
The, the points made with, the way it is, or?
Yeah.
I think that vermaata was actually taken from something that we found back in March.
That was my suspicion, because it's, to me, it is kind of.
But I really don't care, because as long as the meeting is there, it's fine, so.
Could, could we live with it, wait a s?
Yes.
Save him retyping. Any comments from the public on neither, nor? Sailing right along.
So, so that's.
Yeah, we're gonna leave it as this, it remains as this.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. We'll take all events and displays on city green, that, three sentences, any comments from the council?
Those three sentences, well, Hannah had a grammatical change, I don't know whether we need to make that grammatical change, but.
We can do as we want, but if it really makes sense, then by all means. Uh, she wanted to put, after identifying, put the word is, or there, excuse me, sponsors.
Identifying their sponsors, yeah. That's, that's more correct with the displays.
I think so, I agree with that change.
Okay?
Me too.
Okay. By the way, we, we, Mel got a very, very nice email from Hannah, praising the council for their efforts that they're putting into this. She really feels that, uh, uh, the group is very dedicated to see that things are done right and fairly. And she thanked everyone that has particip, yeah, participated in, in the exercise. Did you know what I, yeah, yeah. Okay, any other, uh, okay, so the only change is the word there and S on the end of sponsor, and then middle sentence. Okay, comments from the public? Hearing none, we're gonna go to the, the next line, the city council hereby adopts, any changes there? If not, um, number, we're gonna have the inserted paragraph above here, um, and, but we'll go to number one, and Hannah put a comment after city green.
Agreed. That's one of my forty-two comments.
Did you pick that up, Mel? I'm sorry, uh, he needs a comment.
Where? Number one.
Third.
Number one needs a comment after city green.
Oh, sure.
Nope?
Peter did, Peter forgot.
Don't forget.
You gotta realize, Mel's a mathematician.
That's right, and I, I don't have any commas left.
You're just gonna line up like ours does.
I was always taught you never put a comma before the word hand.
I was taught that too, then we're old school.
I guess so.
Okay.
If you want the planning commission to take over punctuation and grammar, I'll tell you, these guys are good.
I was not taught that way.
Okay, we're gonna go to the, finish that paragraph, uh, applications shall be filled no more than thirty days, I'm trying to keep up with the number of pages here.
Now, that third, that's thirty days.
Prior to.
Has an issue with the whole appeal process.
Yes, it does.
We have to deal with that, so.
So, and, uh, Peter, did you have a change on that one?
My suggestion was sixty days for that exact reason, because you've got.
Even, is that enough, though?
Well, probably sixty-five, you've got fifteen days to make your application, no, the committee has to act within fifteen days of the application. Then there is a fifteen-day appeal period, and then, I mean, a fifteen days to file an appeal, and then there's a thirty-day decision point. So sixty is like the absolute.
Yeah.
Limit.
And depending on when a council meeting falls, you, you, I mean, especially if it's in the middle of summer, uh, and we only have one meeting, it's, you, you better add another fifteen days onto your process at minimum, so more like twenty, so maybe.
That was the only per.
Eighty?
Could be seventy-five, could be ninety.
I was gonna say ninety.
On an previous meeting, I thought everybody had agreed on ninety.
Actually, I think you're right.
Oh, good, how much do you have? You want me to start my auctioneer part? No. Everybody with ninety?
Ninety.
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 At least that gives plenty of time.
Yeah. Pay at the end. Ninety it is, okay. Um, number two, any, uh, changes on that?
Well, Hannah has a grammatical one.
Oh, she wipes out that, the display, and puts in. Of which, the display.
Yeah.
Is.
Predominant materials of which the display is constructed.
Okay?
That's fine with me.
Yep. Everybody happy with that?
Yep.
So we're gonna change, audience, we're gonna change, and, and number two, second line, where it says, that, the display, we'll take that out, and in behind the word which, we're gonna put, the displays is, there's another word that gets taken out there, too.
The display, yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is constructed, okay?
Just flows better.
Yeah. And as soon as we can. Sure. Um, item number two, second line, towards the end, uh, is, there's the word materials, right after that, gonna strike that, the display, that's going away, and of which will stay, and it will go, the word it will go away, but then the word the displays will be inserted.
So it'll read predominant materials of which the display is constructed.
Yeah. Display is.
Yep.
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 The paragraph just above that has the same issue with that, the, the very first line here on the right.
The application shall be notified. The display is supposed to be. That's where we're going to ninety days, alright, and change that, we'll get two sheets going.
Do we need to change that, Mel?
No, I think that's different, yeah.
Okay, I think we're okay on that one, we'll let it slide and, again.
There's another here.
Yep, alright, so, um, I think we're gonna bring closure to that. I'm following too many damn sheets.
Yeah, three, three is, is language that was, uh, approved by the board a long time ago. We were down and measured and made sure that four hundred feet was reasonable, along with the height.
Any, any discussion on number three? Peter, nothing for you?
No, Michael, nothing for me.
No, 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 well, you're, you're the only one that gave us written documentation between looking at yours, Hannah's, and my original.
I won't let you get by anything.
I have it written, but it's written on mighty.
Alright, see, remember, if they even go the wrong way, he's get, he's gonna get a ticket.
Number four is, I believe number four is totally new language for everyone, and what I did was attempted to write a paragraph that works very similar to zoning applications, in, whereby people apply to the zoning administrator, uh, except that the court's not involved. That's the only difference, and so, basically, this is, the, the intent here was that the application comes in, the committee has to act, just like, I, I'm the zoning administrator, I have to act within fifteen, fifteen days, if I don't act, it's approved, so that's what, now, we need to talk about that, Peter, because I've got it written, that if they don't act, uh, that it's approved, and, and I'll let you take over in a minute. The rest of it is whereby, once, once, uh, uh, that if it's, that if it's denied, then they can, uh, file appeal with a clerk, and the appeal shall be heard by the city council, so it's trying to flow similar to a zoning process.
Okay.
And fairly, fairly rapidly, and of course, I did it fairly rapidly because I was working with not many days, alright? Now that you got ninety, I mean, you could spread this out a little bit if you wanted to.
Okay.
I like the way, I like it the way it is, right?
And, and Peter had a, a suggestion, Peter, you wanna take?
Mike? I'm uncomfortable, and I'm not sure if I can articulate exactly why, but I'm uncomfortable with, um, an application coming forward, and if for some reason or other the committee can't get together, that that becomes automatically unapproval. If it becomes instead a denial, it was not acted on in fifteen days, what that does is that triggers, immediately that triggers on the beginning of the fifteenth day, the appeal process beginning, and nobody loses anything except time, because you've got then, you've got your fifteen days to file your appeal, you've got thirty days to bring it before the council. And it just, it seemed to me that, in the context of this, it would be better to have the more extended, it would be better to have an actual approval process, where somebody says approved or denied, as opposed to, it's just out there.
Rennie?
The, what Mel has written, though, is the more common approach, because it puts pressure on whatever body it is to make a decision, but they've already had a meeting, so now all they have to do is make a decision, they should be able to do that in fifteen days. I, I, I've never, I, I know what you're talking about, but I've never seen language that, uh, automatically makes a denial, it's always disapproved.
It holds their feet to the fire, and I think that's a good thing.
Yeah. See, it's a DR, so zoning administrator, if I don't act within fifteen days, it's approved. DRB, once they have a public hearing, they don't act within forty-five days, it's approved, it's just, that's how it works.
Well, if it is your mind, Peter, I, it doesn't, it doesn't stipulate that the committee meet, so the committee acts, so, I mean, it could be.
By phone.
Uh, by phone, or by email, or something like that, so, maybe that.
Okay, I, I will certainly go with majority of this.
Everybody in the audience, keep up with that whole motion or action, so, Mary?
Yes, Mary Harris, um, now that we've moved it off to ninety days, so that they have a possibility of this coming about before their event, if they've had a denial, that makes a lot more sense, but, um, I don't see enough specifics here, where it starts out, um, the determination by the city clerk that the application is complete, then the city clerk calls a meeting of the committee to review and act on the application. So we don't really have any time scheduled there, hoping it happens quickly.
Says forthwith.
Forthwith.
So therefore, then the committee shall act on the application within fifteen days of their meeting. So that meeting might not get scheduled for a week or two weeks or something, and then fifteen days from their meeting, uh, failure of the committee to act deems it approved, we, in process on that piece. Um, if the application is denied, so we're up to probably thirty days now, uh, denied, the applicant has the right to appeal the decision by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within fifteen days of the decision. So that could come up to like forty-five days now, and the appeal will be heard by the city council within thirty days of filing the appeal. We're still getting kinda close to that ninety day thing, so that's just what I want you to consider.
What is, what, which, a legal term?
Drop everything?
And go.
Okay. So, so, I mean, one of the things, I mean, I, you know, I, I do understand, Mary, what you're saying, and it's, you know, shall forthwith call a meeting, I, I can see where that meeting may need to be held within fifteen days, okay, I mean, that's okay. So it's kinda like Joan, when you call a meeting of the BCA, right? Okay, you know, you know, I think that when you ca, there's a process that you, you.
Seven days, actually.
Okay, so, so that, the idea of, of calling and holding, you know, that's, that's fine, and, you know, shall forthwith call a meeting, which shall be held within fifteen days, you know, whatever day you want, seven, fifteen, whatever, and then it says, then, so now you, now, uh, she, so she's gonna call that meeting within fifteen days, could be three days, could be fourteen, fifteen, and now the, then the committee meets, okay? And then the, that committee shall act within fifteen, so if you're gonna, if you wanna extend it, forthwith, media, if we put fifteen days in here, there's fifteen, worst case, fif, uh, fifteen more, alright, and the decisions, uh, decisions issued in a fifteen-day, uh, appeal period on, on a denial. Right, so there's forty-five. And, and, oh no, fifteen, no, they deny, and then it goes to the, they have fifteen days to appeal to the city council, and that's, and then they, uh, they have a, a hearing within thirty days, so, that's the seventy-five out of the ninety.
Possibly they might not be able to have their event, just due to the process of getting to the date. If you're at seventy-five.
Not any of that, it's a display.
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 Event also.
No.
No.
This is just displays.
This is just displays.
What would be the impact of saying in that third line, the committee shall act on the application within fifteen days of the submission of the application? That would mean that the calling of the meeting, the calling of the meeting by the clerk and the committee's decision would come within fifteen days. I mean, you cut, use, use the, by using the word forthwith, you have essentially done that, but. It, forthwith could be, I mean, like, like you're saying, I mean, the city clerk could not do anything for thirty days. There's nothing that says she has to do it within a specific period of time.
Other than using the word forthwith.
Okay, alright. Forthwith works for me, I mean, I just.
One works for me.
So, we have a couple things going here. One, do we leave it as this, or do we take Peter's recommendation, actually, three, uh, to be denied? So, everybody?
I'll drop the denial.
Okay, okay, good, alright, no, no? And, uh, is everybody comfortable with the wording by standing with the forthwith?
I think it, but, but it's about, when sh, she must forthwith call a meeting, the issue is how far out is that meeting? Okay, and I think that if that meeting, you know, is no more than fifteen days, and so now she set the meeting, now the committee meets, and it says that the committee shall act on the application within fifteen days of their meeting, they may act right then and there, but they may, they may not, they may meet a number of times, they may want testimony, they may want, but they only, they have only fifteen days to review that application, deliberate, and make a decision. And then once that decision is made, if, if it's denied, then they have the right of appeal, and that's that, you know, that now it's outside, outside of the committee.
It's like we're on the Supreme Court.
Well, where it says, you know, they have the right to appeal the decision by filing the written appeal with the city clerk.
Within fifteen days of the decision.
Yeah, but should they file the written appeal with the city council, that's who they're appealing to.
Well, they're, they're, you're just getting it, you're, you're just receiving it.
And you, once you get it.
I feel like they're, they're filing their appeal on my actions, filing the appeal with me.
But you'll, they stamp it, so then we know how long we have to respond.
Yeah.
I think it, I think it's good, and if we have to tweak it, we can always tweak it in a year, I just, we could discuss this for two hours, and I'm not sure we're gonna get any farther along.
I think it flows okay.
I don't have any problem with the paragraph as it stands.
Okay, four's done.
Counsel?
I agree.
Agree, as, as it stands? Same answer?
Yeah.
Yep, so, number four is the way it stands, number five, um, Peter, you had a couple things?
I got a bunch of commas.
Yep, go for it.
Second line after nuisance, comma.
Public nuisance, comma, or?
Yeah, and then, um, fourth line after persons, comma.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope.
Um, four, let me take one.
Just keep it easy.
Three, four, five, six line.
Third up, line from the bottom, regulations.
After regulations.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna put a comma there, you gotta get rid of the word and, I mean, the, the way that's written is regulations and ordinances, it's kind of one thing, Peter, 'cause then it goes on to say state and federal law.
So leave that one out.
Okay?
Okay, and, um, then on the next to last line.
Insert?
Insert it at the end. And then insert on the next line down, A in front of specials. So it would be, the display may also be denied if in the opinion of the committee it conflicts with A, special use under Article.
Where'd the public, public nuisance definition come from?
Rennie?
No.
No.
You found it?
No. Came from California.
Is that where it came, I was curious, where you found it?
That's where it came from.
Okay.
And I have a few comments about it, 'cause I.
And I have a few comments about it, cause I was researching some more definitions of the A. And I, and, and I didn't bring my Black's Law dictionary with me, I forgot it, but, um, I don't know, was it my time?
You can, yep, yep, sure, you may comment.
Okay. First of all, after it says public nuisance is defined as a interference, and it should be with a common right of the general public. Cause there are many. And this is just, I'm gonna spot out a few things and mix it with what Hannah has as comments. I'm wondering whether in front of the first interference defined as interference, whether we put the word unreasonable as it is in, in the rest of the paragraph where it says unreasonable interference there also. I, I, I didn't, I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying, consider whether we should put the word unreasonable before interference there. Hannah questioned whether we should have the words or an indefinite number of persons. I think it should be in there because in almost all the definitions that I looked at, that, that wording was in there. Also Hannah indicated about the word comfort, and about how subjective it could be about community comfort. That also is in a lot of definitions. If it were to change, I have two possible ways of it changing. We could either have a go or an unreasonable interference with the public health, safety, or welfare, period. Because those three terms, health, safety, and welfare are very commonly used relative to the impact of ordinances. So, if we don't just end it there, the other way to do it is to say an unreasonable interference with the public health, safety, welfare, or the peace or comfort of the community. So we could leave all of those words in there. But we should add the word welfare because even under the statute that allows us to make this definition, it uses those three words.
My feeling is that freedom of speech can make people uncomfortable. And you don't have the right to, to stop that if they're uncomfortable. So I think I'd strike it, frankly.
Yeah, well, that's why I said one of the options would be to just use the public health, safety, and welfare, period.
I like that.
I like that, too, I like that, yep. I do too.
Sounds like at least three.
Four? Five?
And, I don't know whether you want to put in the word unreasonable in, in front of that first interference or not. What do you think?
I think that's, it's consistent.
Well, you're, 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 you look like a hemin掺har.
I don't want any interference. And I, I, I mean, that's, I mean, that was my immediate reaction, cause I don't think people should, should, uh, you know, I, uh, that was, that was my immediate reaction on that one. I don't, I didn't want it necessarily, cause that, what it does is it qualifies it, it's okay to somewhat interfere. And I, and I, I don't think it should interfere.
Yeah, it definitely has that, that effect.
Okay. Okay, so we leave it as is?
Yes.
Bill, leave as is?
Fine, yeah, I can leave it out.
Ready? As is.
I'm gonna have to work with Rennie on this one, I think, I think we have it, it's here.
Okay.
There are so many definitions that, when you start digging into it, that
Anything else on number five? That we haven't covered? Public? Anything else the, you wanna chime in on?
I was gonna make a comment, but it's just, I think, so.
Okay. All right, um, we'll go right to number six. Any changes on number six? Don't see any on that one. I don't see any on this one. Okay, no change on number six from anybody? Number seven?
Yeah, six and seven, I think, were worked out at the last meeting, Mike.
Number, Article three, management.
No change.
No change.
That's, that's old.
Old news.
As they say in the pictures?
Amen.
The N. Rennie?
I made a motion that we accept this policy with all the edits.
Uh, I think we actually
You're just gonna adopt it?
Huh? You're gonna adopt it?
If that's what you want, that's fine.
Do I, I have a motion to adopt it as edited. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Ziggy?
I would.
Any, any comments?
I'd like, I'd like to, but I'd also like to see it in a complete form to reread. Yeah, we also talked about maybe having the city attorney just read it and make sure that there was nothing that was askew in terms of, I don't think there will be, and I don't wanna spend a lot of money, you know, having him do the research, but Peter talked about that, and we talked about that a couple of months ago. And I guess if, if that could be done in the next two weeks and we can have a draft to look at, I'd be the first to make a motion in the next meeting.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, we can do one or two things, we can
We can, you know, somebody can move, move to table.
We can, yeah.
Or withdraw, either way.
You can either make a, you can withdraw your motion, or you can make it, somebody can say you wanna table it, second it.
After, after having made the comment about the city attorney, but now having completed this.
You wanna get it off your head.
I wanna, I wanna approve it, so, I mean, so the group doesn't have to come back one more time to be sure that we're here.
Trying to remember Robert's rules for reconsideration. If reconsideration required, uh, and if you're gonna reconsider, you have to reconsider in the next meeting, I think. Isn't that how Robert's rules go?
I don't know.
No, you have to table it to our time specific.
That's, it's different.
No, but I mean, no, if, no, if you pass something, you can re, you can bring it back up for reconsideration, but there's a, there's a time period, and I think the time period
Same meeting, reminding the business has to occur in
Oh, is that right?
Rescind would be the next meeting.
You could rescind it, you could rescind it.
Rescind it.
At the next meeting. So, I mean, I, I, I see what you're saying, Bill, um,
You guys can all vote in favor, I don't dare.
Everybody's been waiting for so long, I, I, I mean, I would like to see it passed. And then if there is, there is a substantial problem that the city attorney discovers, or something comes up, we can rescind it at the next meeting and put a, a policy
Or you can amend it.
You can also amend it, yeah.
Sure, okay, that's fine, that's fine. As long as there's a way, if we, if we have a, an issue, we can deal with it.
Yeah, that's right, we can amend it.
We have a motion and a second, gonna bring it, this to the, the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I would really like to thank the mayor and the council, Mary Harris. I would really like to thank the mayor and the council, all your work. You guys have put in lots and lots of hours, many, many things behind the scenes that we don't know about. So thank you for keeping the people in the front of your minds.
Thank you. I take very little credit. These were the driving forces and these are the supporting forces. So, thank you, everyone, for your participation in the city. And there's a lot more, if we, if we can get you out, help, a lot more that can happen.
Need you again, probably.
And whether you're a virgin citizen or of a neighboring town, we welcome all the help we can get. Kinda, we don't have gates or fences between, between us. Okay, so that's passed, excellent, thank you. Mel, city manager's report.
I'm gonna just report on one, one thing, and it was included in your packet. One of the items of, seemed like a lot of discussion was about police budgeting, police staffing, and, you know, how that budget has gone up. And, and obviously, uh, I sensed that the, the city council would appreciate some data, all right? So George and I met shortly after your meeting. We have this computer incident reporting system, and it, it can really generate paper. And I, I started out with a lot and worked with George to try to get something, obviously, much more concise, and hopefully provide some information for the city council to be able to compare, uh, looking back in time, all right? And so what I had, what I had George do was just shrink this whole, all of this information and pull together num, numbers for two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve. Of course, two thousand and twelve just represents six months of information. And then I said, just jump back five years, we have, we have information on the incident reporting system going back to like two thousand or two thousand and one. I said, just jump back, jump back to two thousand and five and just pull a, pull the report. Now, I will tell you that when you look at, when you look at offenses, some of these numbers, you can take them to the bank. You know, for instance, if there was sixteen felonies, that's, that is the number. Misdemeanors, that is the number. Traffic tickets, that is the number. Warnings issued, written warnings issued, those are real numbers, okay? So you can take, you can take that kind of information and use it. Relative to total incidents, you know, part of the problem is, is what is a reportable incident? And the key is really about consistent reporting. So that, you know, if an incident, if you're assisting the state police on a particular call, assisting another agency, that's an incident, okay? And you would log that in. Let's say that the state police showed up and they were talking about a case that's subjective. Is, is, is that an incident, or is it, is it not? So, so what I'm telling you is, is that don't get too wrapped up in incidents. And I'm not, I'm not saying that the numbers are, are not at all meaningful. I'm just saying that, that not all incidents are reported into the, into, into the system. And sometimes there's over-reporting into the system. So, you gotta say, you know, plus or minus ten percent in there. But, but I was trying to do was to show, show you, you know, the, the increase in incidents that we have encountered over the past two-plus years. And, and take a little, just a little quick snapshot of two thousand, two thousand and five, particularly, you know, on, on the productivity, if you will. If you just, if you just look at tickets alone, or, or arrests, convictions, you know, those, those are real numbers. So, I just thought I would do that, and this is something that, that we'd put together for you, uh, you know, I'm gonna say at a minimum every six months. It could be done, it could be done quarterly. What, what George and I would, would like is, you know, nobody, you don't necessarily need to give, give us any guidance now, but is, you know, we might, we'd like to know, is this the type of information that's helpful to you? You know, cause I think sometimes, I spoke to Randy the other day, and, you know, the public talks to a city council member and says, what the hell's going on with the police budget, okay? And you have to answer that question. And, and it's good to have some data, you know, have some kind of data that you can, you can respond and, and, cause I think they're saying, well, they're busy. You know, I mean, I, you know, that just, you know, that just doesn't cut it, I mean, you gotta have some, have some data, so.
Well, I, I know that he's busy because my niece got a ticket
There you go.
Going through a stop sign and paid a hundred and fifty-two bucks, and she wasn't very happy. I said, that's too bad.
Now, what is the definition of written warnings? What is that, is that?
It's a, it's a motor vehicle stop.
Oh, the motor vehicle, okay.
Motor vehicle, and, and they're issued a written warning.
So what is the traffic offenses?
Those are tickets.
Okay.
So, they can do, they can do like a warning maybe for a headlight that's out.
Okay.
That's, that's my report, Mike. Excellent, oh, I know, we got some more that you gotta report on here in a minute. Something different's on the agenda. Okay, uh, any questions on any of that, or any, any other data from any other department that you would wanna see? Let Mel know, or myself know, and I'll, we'll, we'll figure out what it is. Yes, sir?
Question, I think I know the answer to it already, unfortunately. But I assume all of the paving that was done on North Main and, and Main Street and Moncton Road is our cap, right?
Our cap, yep, yep.
So, the, the deal with the, the state is that when they, they only get involved when it, they don't
A big, class one.
A real major
Right.
Kind of re, repair.
Class one resurfaces, right.
It's not, this doesn't count, even though that, that was a substantial overlay that we did, of course, we would have to on a heavy
Right, right. You know, Rennie, you know, I, I haven't seen this bill, but I know, I know, I know the bill's pretty
I know what one section is.
And you know, I suppose, you know, we could've, we could've got on the list, you know, for, you know
For ten years from now?
Yeah, something like that, and, uh, you know, so we just, we just did it, you know, cause it was bad.
It was getting pretty bad.
But one of the things that we are going to do is, is, is relatively, they still have the, the class two, the class two fifty-fifty match. And so what we wanna do is get an application this year to do either, you know, class two roads, you know what they are, you know, Moncton Road, you know, Maple Street, whatever. So, uh, so we're, uh, you know, we're not done, you know, we're not done for this fiscal year, but I can assure you, we put a dent in
Hearing a lot of com, compliments about tho, that stretch. I've talked with Jim Laro, who I meant to mention is still having issues on his eye. Not sure where that's ending up, he's got a doctor's appointment, I hope to get an update, and I'll, once I know something, I'll, I'll pass the word around to council members. But for those that do pray, keep him in your prayers. It's not a very pleasant thing that he's going through. Kind of a detached retina thing, and it, this is not, this is the second time with one of these eyes, so it's, it's not going well. So, uh, keep him in your, your minds.
Mike, I just wanna comment as a business owner on North Main, I really appreciate the communication that came from City Works. And they came in at five AM to start replacing the covert under our driveway so that the minimum amount of business could be disrupted. And I just wanna say how much I appreciate that.
Yep, and they were supposed to be in, was it last night, painting? They did, so, I must've been sleeping on the way through town, cause I didn't catch it. So, yep, so they're, they're, I talked to, I stopped and saw Jimmy last night, brought him some goodies to eat. And he said that his guys are right on top of things, keep, keeping stuff caught up, and he's keeping in touch.
That's pretty good.
Yep, so. Okay, um, then let's, I think we're all done there, so, um, let's go to nine B, Crosby Farms Stormwater System. We'll turn it over to Mel, he'll discuss, uh
Yeah, I, I shared with the, the city council, Mike attended this meeting, I shared with the city council. I noticed that, went out to the residents of Crosby Farms, which there were, I invited sixty people to a meeting last night. People live on Adele Drive, Green Meadow Acres, Booster Court, Crosby Court, and Bauman Road. I wanna say there was about twenty-five or thirty, thirty people there. It, it, the report from Otter Creek Engineering, there's no question about it, it's late, it's, you know, it's clearly a month, a month later than what Brent wanted. And it is a preliminary, preliminary report. There's another questionnaire that actually came in today, Jeff, that's gonna be going out in the mail tomorrow to gather additional information from property owners about inventories of sump pumps and foundation drains and this type of thing. I can tell you, um, I, I want, I actually wanna let Jeff speak, cause I'm, I'm, Jeff talked a little bit after the meeting, but I think, uh, and I don't know what he's gonna say, but I think, you know, I, I think it's important for you all to, to hear from, uh, hear from Jeff. And I don't know what he's gonna say. But I can tell you, one of the things that was very important, we were, about the meeting to me, is that we were very fortunate that Matt, and I don't know his last name, it's like Pedrosa or something like that, who works for the stormwater section. I asked, I asked Brent to invite Jim Pease, who is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say Matt's boss because the state came down. I think the state admits that, that they, uh, you know, not that, not that the city's been perfect throughout this whole process, but you know, I think it's pretty clear that the state, you know, you know, didn't have good regulations and oversight, and, and and the ci, and the state was in the business of issuing and reviewing stormwater permits before the city was involved with it. Anyway, I felt that Matt, uh, it was a kind of a tough meeting at times, but I, I mean, I think that Matt handled himself very well, trying to educate people. And, uh, you know, they actually can be a bit of, of the solution here, uh, you know, cause it's a storm, it's a stormwater system, and if there's gonna be modifications, we have, we there has to be permits, all right? And, and those permits, uh, you know, my feeling, you know, you know And, and those permits, uh, you know, my feeling, you know, you know, if there's, um, remedy that needs to be done, it needs to be done soon, and, and, and so they need to process that, an amendment, uh, in pretty short order, and, uh. I can tell you, Sue Furlan, you know, held his feet to the fire pretty hard, but, but, uh, you, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't hold him to a date, but I, I, I really felt that he was sincere about, about giving this, uh, giving this priority, so, so Mike, I, I would just, I'd like to have Jeff, you know, speak about how he felt this, this somewhat awkward, uncomfortable meeting, uh, was last night.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, Jeff, our, uh, first of all, I wanna say, you know, a number of residents had written up to the city council, asking for more involvement in the discussions on stormwater issues that we've been having. And we had that last night. I think it was a good meeting, I think, um, you know, the intentions of, I think, what we were all trying to get out of it, it, you know, I think that's different by resident, obviously, because we've been dealing with this for fifteen months now. So we were really hoping to have a resolution, uh, and I think, within the meeting, I think we determined that there's probably a lot more to say about the stormwater system and the history of problems that the development has had since it's gone in, since, you know, the eighties and nineties, when the different phases were made. So I think it was good for Brent to hear that. I think it was good for the state to hear that as well. Um, there's definitely some design issues, there are some, uh, the, the calculations that were used for the runoff appear to be way off, uh, which is why we back up so much when we get a, a strong storm. We've had three flooding events, uh, within the last, that, that, within fifteen months. The residents that have been there since the, the late eighties, nineties, had never had any flooding events whatsoever. So it was, the meeting was good to try to discuss what may be causing that, and, and I don't think we really came up with a, a conclusion for what specifically is causing that, other than, historically, as the area has been developed, there's been numerous problems that have come up, and it only appears to be getting worse. So I definitely, you know, appreciate Mel putting the meeting together, and, and, and Mike putting the meeting together. I think that was beneficial. Obviously, there's gotta be a follow-up meeting, but, um, the sooner we can fix the backups that are happening, I think the better off we're gonna be, 'cause most of the residents that are experiencing the flooding had not experienced it until fifteen months ago. We've had three since that time. And in each situation, the situation was exactly the same. The culverts backed up. The water sat on the, you know, basically sat feet off of the culverts that were supposed to drain down, um, and backed up into the houses, filled the, you know, the water table. So I think it was good. I'd be curious to hear what the actual resolution is going to be. There's a number of recommendations that are in the report that may be mandates, but they're not gonna fix the issue, because the system is not designed for the amount of watershed that, that flows through that development. And until we address that, it's not gonna get fixed, so adding a pipe here and there is really not gonna be the solution. It's gonna be bigger than that, I think, unfortunately.
Yeah, I, I can just tell you, Brett and I talked a little bit on the phone today. I mean, you, you, you know, you have his preliminary report, and there's some recommendations here that, that, let me just tell you that the two things that we talked about, and we're gathering pricing already, is to, is to get the stormwater system, uh, checked out by camera, alright? And just, you know, one of the things, uh, you know, which Brett and I were talking about, and he, he's got a lot more experience with viewing, you know, I can't imagine sitting there looking at a screen of a camera going down a, a storm pipe, but anyway, people have different forms of entertainment, but anyway, I've seen some of it, I've seen some of it before, and I can tell you that, that, uh, the limited amount that I've seen, you act, there, there can be surprises out there. And, and an example, yeah, I mean, sure, yeah, be, you know, you know, will we find a basketball out in the middle of the, probably not, okay? But I can tell you, there's lots of times these cameras go down, and it's where somebody put in a, a real sloppy connection, you know? Like, you know, people have, have their, uh, have sump pumps and a, and a drain that goes out into that pipe, and, and it's, you know, there should be a saddle, and there should be, there's a, a method, uh, for that. Now, this is a stormwater pipe, so unlike sewer, which requires an inspection by the Public Works Department, everybody who tied into that, into that storm sewer, they weren't inspected by us, because it wasn't our line. It's very possible that there's four-inch pipes sticking into the middle of this thing. We don't know. And it's gonna cost some money to, to, uh, to film this. I just think it's worth it. You know, let's just, you know, you know, let's just find out, and, and, and if there's nothing, to me, and we've spent that money, and we know that there's, that it, that there wasn't some, some obstruction in the way, and then.
You might, you might find a solution very, very quickly.
Possibly, but I, I, I just wanna make sure that there isn't something, something obstructing, uh, in there. The other thing is, uh, it appeared as if, and this is gonna be a tough one, Jeff, this whole detention pond area, you know? It, it, it seems that the detention pond may be too small, uh, you know, the, the elevation of overflows are a little, and, and the laws have changed, uh, you know, that's another problem you're trying to fix. You wanna upgrade a system that was, that was designed with regulations that don't longer exist, and it's sitting on Jason and, and Jason Russell's property, you know, there, there's, there's more of a nut to crack there than, than was let on last, uh, last night, I can, I can tell you that. But that's where, you know, Brent and Matt, I mean, they need to, they need to figure out what the, you know, what the, uh, what the solution is, because I'm, I'm sensing that, uh, and I know, I know that you feel, I know you feel very strongly that, that that's the weak link, uh, out there, that, uh, is that, uh, the pond, uh, the elevations of that overflow are such that the thing just surcharges under, under, you know, it's gonna surcharge under, under crazy events, like the event that occurred on May sixteenth, but other events that, uh, you know, may have been around the tenure event, you know, we're getting surcharges, and, and, and the system oughta handle that, you know, it's, uh, and it's not. So I think that we, you know, I think we're making some progress, we're, uh, we're trying to have the state, and I think Matt understands that this is a, this is a priority, and I believe that Brent does too, and so we're, the, the questionnaire request, I was gonna use the word required, request that people get back to us by July twenty-seventh. So that'll, like I say, that'll go out in the mail tomorrow, and I think it was, it was certainly hoped that, that the group would get together clearly by the end of August, and I don't see any reason why, why that can't be, uh, can't be met, given, given the, uh, you know, the questionnaire and the work that needs to occur between Matt and Brent.
I just think, obviously, we don't wanna have this keep going on, and, you know. From the meeting, I think everyone realizes.
Did you guys experience anything with today's rain at all?
No.
Thank.
No, it's not somebody, those, those culverts across the road from us, uh, up near Crosby Court, until those back up, and we don't see it.
Okay. I was curious, 'cause we started getting some heavy stuff there. I think we really dodged the bullet compared to, or hearing what was on the, the TV with.
Right.
You know, branches, trees down, and severe storm?
Sump pumps. You have a perimeter drain, this is what we're talking about, that is going into something.
Storm system.
Right, so do you have an emergency sump pump right now, just in case it floods again, or do you have anything in there like that?
Yeah, so I have, um, in my, in my perimeter, our perimeter drain, which feeds into the sump basin, within the sump basin, I have what's called a triple save sump pump, there's three pumps in that one basin. After the last two storms, we put in this, an emergency outlet to daylight.
Okay.
Uh, we also put in a valve, so we can shut off the city's drain, so we can avoid discharge back into our system, 'cause that's what happened both, the other time, the city's system discharged down into our hole. In the last flood, though, I had, May sixteenth, um, my water alarm went off, it called my cellphone. I had a relative go over to the house, turn my valve to shut the city's storm system off, so it wouldn't surcharge back. After that point, we still had, had already eight inches come in. All three of my pumps were going out, um, four-inch pipe on the side of my house, um, pushing out towards the road, basically.
Okay.
I also had two secondary utility pumps with hoses going out in the back of the house. That lasted for about an hour and a half to two hours constantly, uh, until the retention pond eventually released, and the waters, the water table subsided, but we estimate that we, my, my pumps are some of the best you're gonna get for a, for a home sump system. We put it in before we, we finished our basement, 'cause I didn't wanna have the risk of, you know, getting water in the basement. But from this last flood, it was obvious, even shutting off the city storm drain system, having my, all three pumps pumping and two utility pumps, we stayed at eight inches for an hour and a half or so. It's obvious, I, I'm a, from a homeowner's standpoint, there's not much more I can do, other than move my house. 'Cause I can't stop. If the water table's rising up, I cannot stop that, no matter how many pumps I have, no matter where I'm exiting my, my drain system. There's nothing I can do about it. I, so we're at a loss, until it gets fixed, any storm that tends to back up that system.
There, there was a lot of discussion about how to kind play, when you start laying pipes, and it creates many different, I mean, so, there was, something has triggered since the development was put in place, and you can try to point fingers, it's really hard to pin, pin the tail on, on the right object. I, I think it's gonna take a bunch of different things to get that to work. I, I think a possibility is piping, but I think if you address some of those, it's gonna relieve some of that.
Where does that, retention pond, where does that drain into?
Green Street. Green Street.
Right into Green Street.
Yep.
And then down to the river.
Down to Mossy Brook.
Mossy Brook, over the, through the woods.
Happens is that fills up, and rather than overflowing the detention ponds as it's supposed to, there's an overflow on the detention pond. It doesn't overflow the detention pond to go where it needs to go, it goes back up the line, towards the lower Bowman residence, which is where all the flooding happens, and then the water sits there on the properties where the culverts are, and just collects.
And the prob- problem is, the city owns the permit, they don't own or have an easement to the property.
Or the detention pond.
Or the detention pond. So it's, it's a multitude of issues, and they're all being looked at, to see what we can do to try to get things smoothed out as quick as we can, uh, and that's what these meetings are for, and try to make progress. We will. Thank you for coming. Okay, uh, any thing, any other questions on, uh, Crosby Farms Stormwater System? Nothing at the council? Item C, two thousand and twelve, grant list?
Uh, I'm hoping this is a no-brainer. One of the beauties of our, of our, uh, computer tax billing system is that when, just when Joan is about to print the bills, it pops up an error message, and, uh, this year, it popped up two error messages. I, I can't remember one of them, but it might've been a homestead issue or something or other, but the other one that it popped up was where a, a taxable piece of property was about to get a property tax bill for zero. And so, uh, we, we immediately investigated that, and this is what happened here, is that the, the piece of property that, that was owned by, uh, Richard and Evy Burke transferred into, uh, the Sullivan family, if you will. They went through a subdivision process. Uh, I provided some technical work for the board of listers. We, we separated the, uh, the parcel, and when Chris, Chris Rockwood was here, I'm gonna say the late Chris Rockwood, Chris, uh, you know, passed away a couple of months ago. He was the employee for APUS that took care of maintenance, uh, for us. He, uh, he didn't pick up and enter data on the, on the Rossier, entered data in there about, uh, the lot size was there, but there was no neighborhood grade, or, uh, or, uh, there was a neighborhood value and a grade value, and so it, it wasn't there, so it popped up zero. So what the request is, the listers are requesting that the city council authorize a correction in the two thousand grand list to, uh, include a value of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars for, uh, the lot owned by Glenn and Kathy Rossier, located at one eighty South Maple Street.
Make said motion.
Motion made, seconded by Ziggy.
If somebody else can talk.
Open for discussion.
The only thing that, that I would say is, um, this is to an errors and omissions policy, which is by statute. This, any of these corrections can be made until December thirty-first, and they have to be approved by the select board of, Board of Alderman. What we've done in the military for twenty-somethi years is just have the listers, or Melvin, or whomever, keep a spreadsheet of all of the changes, and in your last meeting in December, approve them. See them all at once, as opposed individually, but you don't have twenty or thirty, like I might have, so you don't have to, that, that's just something that might make the, the process sl- simpler.
Yeah, we, we actually, the only other thing, Bill, is the, the first installment's due on August fifteenth, and I wanna send Glenn them bill.
Well, there you go. You can send them a bill. We send the bills out. We just don't approve the, the changes for the, until the end of December.
Really?
Yeah, we send the bills out.
And they say you're signing out to pay it?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
I think this is it.
We have a motion, in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We have, uh, a little more than what's on the agenda, but we'll try to move it along.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest, Mike, on a.
Point, we need to, we, uh, we need to appoint three positions. We can do it all at one time. The city manager, Mel Hawley, a city clerk, treasurer, Joan Devine, a city attorney, uh, Jim Womat, runs the.
At the firm, a woman runs the.
The firm, so I'd ask for a motion.
Make said motion.
Second. Motion made by Randy, seconded by, um, Joe?
Let's table it.
Okay, it's all right.
Do you wanna table it?
No.
If you wanna table it, you can table it.
We'll give you the key to my office.
I have a motion in a second, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we have a choice. We can go into executive session, because I didn't get response from people on salary increases. I have, uh, got three individuals that responded to Mel's, uh, three other ones that responded to Joan's, three that responded to, uh, Melissa's, and I, I felt that I was safe enough to stick my neck out on Melissa's, because I didn't want her to worry, and I became the fourth person, but I was not willing to stick my neck out on, uh, Mel's and Joan's. I, I would've voted in, but the percentage, and I don't know if you need to go into executive session to, to talk about this, but the percentage was three percent for both. Randy?
I know I commented on one of them, on Melissa's, I commented on those.
That's right, and you didn't, you didn't come on, on the other two.
Well, fine.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, so Randy's the fourth. I have four people that feel that, uh, they should get a three percent. I, I need something in the minutes stating such. Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Ziggy made a motion, and Bill seconded it, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of Mel and Joan getting a three percent increase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Peter, the honors.
Adjourned.
I will be adjourned.
And Ziggy?